We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And tonight's invocation will be provided by Pastor Carlos Campos from the Taylorville Christian Church. Master?
Calvary, I'm sorry.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you and we're just thankful for another day, Father of life, another day to be here. Father, just allow us today to just love you more and to worship you more and to just grow closer to you in our relationship with you, Father. Father, pray for this meeting in the next few moments. Father, give all the men and women in this room wisdom and guidance to follow the, to make decisions that are based upon you and to bring honor and glory to you, Father. Allow everything that's said here and done, just to worship you and to bring you honor and glory. We love you, Father, and your son's going to need.
May I join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Larry Budd, Sean Burdell, Rodney Dorchenaz, Rob Heatherling, Bruce Jones, Ray Coons, Martin Vota, Earl Walters.
Seven of them present, one absent. First thing we have is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings and the public hearings listed on tonight's agenda under the title Omnibus Vote Designation. Motion by Alderman Dorchenaz, second by Alderman Jones. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Sean Burdell, Rodney Dorchenaz, Rob Heatherling, Bruce Jones, Ray Coons, Martin Vota, Earl Walters.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the special city council meeting held May 5th, 2014. Minutes of the public hearing regarding the bond held May 5th, 2014. Minutes of the public hearing regarding water annexations also held May 5th, 2014. And then minutes of the regular meeting held May 5th, 2014. Minutes of the Water Environmental Committee meeting held May 8th, 2014. Minutes of the Lake Airport Committee meeting held May 8th, 2014. Minutes of the Ordinance Committee meeting held May 13th, 2014. And minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held May 13th, 2014. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Some move, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Burdell. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Rodney Dorchenaz, Rob Heatherling, Bruce Jones, Ray Coons, Martin Vota, Earl Walters, Sean Burdell.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation by the Tri-County Quail to the S.B. Edwards Youth Fishing Tournament. Are they here? Please. I'm not sure who should receive this. I would ask if no one else is receiving it. Bruce has a member of the family. Would you please do the honors, Bruce?
I'd like to have Superintendent Jackson up there, too.
Sure.
He's the guy who's the driving force behind us here. As we all know, my father-in-law, S.B. Edwards, was quite a fisherman, a legend in his own mind, as he was in the lake. We just appreciated what the groups have done to support this, as well as Superintendent Jackson being the driving force behind it. So, and this is from Quail Forever. Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
And this is from Whitetails?
Yes, Mr. Larry Lightner.
Okay.
And Whitetails Unlimited, if you don't know, has been a firm supporter of youth programs, especially in the archery deer hunting in Christian County. And again, Tri-County Quail Forever has just been a magnificent supporter of the S.B. Edwards Youth Tournament and Whitetails Unlimited as well. So, we'd like to thank you both. And this is going to...
Thank you. If you take a push.
We can take a push now, yes.
All right, moving on. Next thing we have, a resolution authorizing the execution of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement and the existence and formation of the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System by intergovernmental cooperation. I entertain a motion by Alderman Burdell.
Second.
Second, Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comment?
Yes, I had some, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters.
I know that this is something that we've done in the past, it's been a while since this has been covered, and this is also sort of a reformatting of the agency, so to speak, by reading through this. No disrespect, but I'll have a bill reading for 23 pages. I wanted to be sure that we know that we have the insurance in force for this, they're required to have a million dollars of insurance. So, is that covered by the city's insurance?
Yes, it is.
All right. And then, if I understand this right, because I know our police chief and our police department are short manpower, I think we have an out, if I read it in here, that even if we're requested help, that we have the right to refuse because of, and explain why, because of the manpower issue.
Right.
And then, the only thing that I was disappointed with, that maybe we could pursue it, that we have nobody from our local police department, our local sheriff's office on the governing board. I'd like to see that, I'd like to have some representation on the governing board.
Sure.
That was all I had.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Of Heatherling, Bruce Jones, Ray Coons, Martin Vota, Earl Walters, Sean Burdell, Rodney Dorchenaz.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have an ordinance amending section 6-4-1 of City Code, adding a four-way stop at England and Power Street.
Your Honor, that came through the Street Service Committee, so I'll make that motion and ask any questions.
All right, can I get a sec on that motion?
Clear.
Alderman Coons, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones, Ray Coons, Martin Vota, Earl Walters, Sean Burdell, Rodney Dorchenaz, Rob Heatherling.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we will award a bid for service line materials for the Water Department.
Your Honor, there's a memo in your packet to me from David Spiegel concerning the service line materials, and I'll make a motion to award the bid for the service line materials to the lowest qualified bidder, which is Schulte Supply Incorporated, at the total price of $15,895.20. I'll make that in form of a motion.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Ray Coons, Martin Vota, Earl Walters, Sean Burdell, Rodney Dorchenaz, Rob Heatherling, Bruce Jones.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we'll award the bid for meter well lids for the Water Department.
There's also a memo in your packet to that effect. I'll make a motion to award the meter well bid to the lowest bidder Midwest Meter for the amount of $5,542.
Second, Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Martin Vota, Earl Walters, Sean Burdell, Rodney Dorchenaz, Rob Heatherling, Bruce Jones, Ray Coons.
That motion passes seven to zero. Brings us to City Attorney Updates.
First thing, gentlemen, if you recall, I reported that you had a roundtable who had issued the city a bad check, $750, for violation of the liquor control ordinance of the city. There has been a suit filed, I filed a suit against them, and the first appearance is on June 16th at nine o'clock. The mayor will be there with me, I assume, so. Secondly, is that I wanted to bring you up to date, if you recall, you signed recently that the collection of your ambulance bills with Charleston, and I've talked to a representative from them and discovered that they actually are just a go-between, they actually send your bills and send them over to a debt collection agency. So, there's no question in my mind that they're our subject of Fair Debt Credit Collection Act, and they are going to consult with the Charleston attorney and get back to me. They were, I think, sounded surprised and also concerned as we should be. And so, they're going to get back to me and I'll report to you what the suggestions they have. I think the agreement probably needs to be amended. Also, I think I'd let you know in April that there was a Freedom of Information Act request given to the Police Department. We responded, it was a 78-page response. It was very cumbersome, it was sent to the Police Department, and the Attorney General has looked at it, they're involved, and then the reply came back, and I want to just put you on notice that on May 9th, we received a response letter from the individual that was requesting it, and he's threatening to file a suit against the city, civil rights action. So, we'll see what happens. We haven't seen the lawsuit yet, but I think that the Attorney General agreed with our position and our response to our FOIA request. They were asking for things like personal phone numbers of your police officers that were involved, which is clearly exempt under disclosure, but be that as it may. The other thing is, and I've talked to Alderman Vota about this, it was addressed to your former city attorney, but one of your members that played in your municipal band wanted to be excused from the requirement that the city has from union membership. And in researching this and talking to Martin and the city clerk, she had actually, he had made this request back in 2011, there was a reply letter sent back then, I think Pam is going to send the same letter with the blessing of the chairman of the band committee. So, unless you folks want to change your rules, essentially anybody, I think, over the age of 16 that's going to play in the municipal band has to join the local music union, so. Also, I think that's it until we get to the little discussion later on about the honey leases and also the water main extension, which I just talked to you about now. You've got a motion coming up under your Water Committee, I just noticed it, that authorized the extension of the water main outside city limits. Now, you have an ordinance that allows certain rules, what happens when you want to extend the water main in town. But when you want to do it out of town, you have to adopt an ordinance, because you're a non-home rule municipality, and designate that special service area, and the, all the, majority of the owners of record have to officially petition you for that service. So, when you come to that motion tonight, I'm going to suggest that you basically direct me to prepare an ordinance to make that happen. And of course, under your rules, they would have to sign an annexation agreement that if and when they become contiguous to the city, they would annex into town, so. I'll stop for right now.
Alderman Walters.
Could you go back to the roundtable, your filed suit?
Small claim suit for the bad check that was written. In the agreement that, the agreed order that was signed, they agreed to also shut their business down for a week, not sell liquor, which was kind of the poison pill, if you will, to enforce the payment of the funds, but they didn't renew their liquor license. So, as for what we know, unless the police tell us, otherwise, they're not selling liquor, so we don't have any other avenue to collect that, other than file a small claim suit. So, that's what we did.
Alderman Vota.
What's that?
They wouldn't rewrite us a new check?
Apparently not. It came back insufficient funds, so. They also, I think, state level two is the same problem.
Okay, we'll go back to the municipal band.
Yes, sir.
I did talk during our meeting, I don't know if I had a chance to talk to you about this, I did to clerk pre-bonding, the, those who play in the band, if they're in high school or they're going to college, because they are not there 100%, they're considered substitutes, and they are not obligated or required to join the union. But if they're a full-time band member, they are. This was briefly discussed, but this is an ongoing issue, I believe, with the same individual several times now.
Appears to be.
So, I think the letter going forward is probably the right way to go, and we'll see what can be done.
All right.
There are people who are exempt because of school.
Correct. And that's been your rules for many, many years.
And they did point out that they do have a list of rules that everybody has to read and sign off on, that they're aware of these directives. So, I think everybody should be on board with this.
Very good.
Any other questions for the City Attorney? Okay, moving on to Mayor Updates. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the young men and women who received their high school diplomas this past weekend and are now ready to move on to either college or join the workforce. Also, want to issue a special thanks to Lake Superintendent Jackson for assisting with the S.B. Edwards Youth Fishing Tournament that held this past weekend, and I want to thank Alderman Walters for his assistance out there as well. We had a, despite the weather, they had a fairly good turnout, a good participation, and hopefully it'll be bigger and better even next year.
Thank you, Your Honor. Also, Alderman Ray Coons goes out there.
Okay. Yeah, and thanks goes out to anyone that helped out there, and we can always use more bodies, so. I do want to put to rest a little concern, several people had called me, and there was some concern about whether the city would have a Fourth of July parade this year, and we will. I mean, we've got the AMV, that will once again sponsor it. With that said, it's like anything else, because we do require insurance, you know, that costs money, and, you know, there was some concern there on whether they would come up with the money, but, you know, they're looking into the ways to do that, and I'm sending potential sponsors their way as well, you know. One thing we can't let happen is to not have a Fourth of July parade. And I told them if the mayor hadn't marched down Fane Street holding the flag by himself, by golly, we're going to have a Fourth of July parade, so. I went to a meeting last Thursday with a missions for Taylorville, and it's something that's been going on a couple of years here, and what they do is, different churches, different organizations around town contribute names of people that need work done on their houses and their yards, or something that they can't get to. It might be a widow or something that can't do the work herself anymore, and everyone kind of gets together on one day and, you know, use their skills to try and help out. And so, that right now is scheduled for Saturday, June 7th, and if you're interested, you know, you might get with, I think it's Pastor Kearns is just kind of heading it up right now with the Davis Memorial Christian Church, but it's not specifically through that church, it's just, you know, anybody that wants to come and help. And finally, last Thursday's edition of the Breach Courier contained an article reflecting on the local newspaper's 120 years in business. And so, I want to congratulate the owners and the employees of the paper who have worked together to make that business, the success it is. Like most people, I don't always like what I read in the paper. Likewise, I don't always like what I see in the mirror. While I might like to blame the mirror or the newspaper for presenting what I deem to be an unflattering view of myself, both usually give a pretty accurate picture of the current scene that they are focused on. Both are beneficial tools that make life better when used properly. Frank Stanton, a former president of CBS, once told a congressional committee that what the media does is to hold a mirror up to society and to try and report it as faithfully as possible. Creators of good newspapers must be able to brave the wrath of irate politicians and/or the general public, who may not like what they are hearing or reading. The staff of the Breach Courier does this, and we should all thank them for it. So, I would ask them, you know, to please relay my congratulations on a job well done to both the owners, as well as the employees of our wonderful newspaper, so I'd like to give them a hand, please. That's all I got, unless anyone else has anything else? Let's move on to committee reports. Discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part, the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. And we'll start off with Water Environmental Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first motion that came out of that meeting was a motion to accept the quota $6,704 from PDC Labs for basic chemical sampling and $3,960 for bacteriological sample analysis for a total of $10,664 for the July 2, 14 to June of 2015. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, get a sec on that?
Second.
Second, Alderman Vota, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero.
I received a phone call on this next motion, I received a phone call from the individual about this, and it would probably behoove us not to go forward with this right now until I've had time to discuss this further with that person, so I'd like to just table it for tonight.
Okay, so motion to table?
Sir.
Second, Alderman Vota, roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Motion passes seven to zero.
I received a phone call on this next motion, I received a phone call from the individual about this, and it would probably behoove us not to go forward with this right now until I've had time to discuss this further with that person, so I'd like to just table it for tonight.
Okay, so motion to table?
Sir.
Second, Alderman Vota, roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero.
I received a phone call on this next motion, I received a phone call from the individual about this, and it would probably behoove us not to go forward with this right now until I've had time to discuss this further with that person, so I'd like to just table it for tonight.
Okay, so motion to table?
Sir.
Second, Alderman Vota, roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero.
I received a phone call on this next motion, I received a phone call from the individual about this, and it would probably behoove us not to go forward with this right now until I've had time to discuss this further with that person, so I'd like to just table it for tonight.
Okay, so motion to table?
Sir.
Second, Alderman Vota, roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Motion passes seven to zero. Motion is tabled. Moving on to Lake Airport Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had two motions come out of the Lake Airport Committee. The first of which was a motion to approve the Taylorville Lake Campers' proposed 2014 calendar of events, pending approval of the special events permit. And gentlemen, you have a copy of that, should have been on the desk in front of you this evening, and my apologies for not having that to you sooner. That is basically filled out, ready to go, I do not see any reason to require you to be insured, et cetera, and therefore, I would accept it as a proposal. I'm trying to make a motion.
Okay, second, who's that? Alderman Jones? Okay. Discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next motion, I'd like to go ahead and go back to our City Attorney, we had a discussion last week, was able to meet with him, I believe you have a bullet list in front of you that the attorney put together for us, and before we make any attempts at any action on this motion, I would like him to go ahead and take the floor and explain some of his concerns and some of our concerns, and maybe his recommendation as to how to move on this.
Well, thank you. I had an email with the mayor, we communicated about this subject matter. Alderman Vota and A.J. and myself met earlier this week, and we kind of brainstormed, if you will, about this topic that came up there, and interested in my input about, from a legal matter, what should be in this type of lease, and then one thing led to another. So, I took the liberty of putting this, our thoughts, down on paper, it was about three and a half pages of things that we ought to probably think about, rather than taking up, you know, an hour or so this evening discussing, it'd be my recommendation that you would actually table this, put this back on your next Lake Committee meeting, and perhaps consider each of these bullet points of thoughts. One thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is that probably in your packet some weeks ago, there is a statute out here that wherever you convert public property, tax-exempt property, to a profitable use, it subjects you to being taxable property. So, whatever you decide to do, you want to make sure that you have a minimum bid that will cover at least the amount of your real estate taxes, or you're in the hole, and it's probably, you know, a useless exercise. There was a lot of discussion at this meeting about whether priority to residents, and whether, I think there was a maximum of three tenants discussed, whether or not all three of these tenants must be residents of the city of Taylorville, otherwise, you run into that situation where I give somebody a few bucks and you're a resident, so you bid on it, you get the lease, and then we have non-residents out here, but that's all, that's, these are all business decisions that you can decide. But I think the things that we were going through here is obviously you want compliance with all the DNR rules and concerning deer hunting, you want to make sure that we don't shoot arrows towards residences within 100 yards, I think that's probably a regulation anyway, or out in the lake property. I understand this will go through in September, when there still may be folks on the lake, that we want to avoid accidents. And of course, we want to make sure that folks are insured, they hold us harmless, we don't want any damage to our property, we've identified in here types of deer stands or portable structures that would be used by the hunters, rather than bailing stuff on our trees and damaging our property, there's a lien to in one of the properties, so, and also addressing that there's a violation of the lease, whether it's one tenant or all of them, the lease can be terminated immediately. So, I think we've covered the basis here, welcome any more thoughts on it, but I think it probably needs to go to the ordinance committee and discuss more thoroughly and come back, if that's your pleasure. That's my recommendation.
What would be the best step tonight? Do we just table it?
I would say table this motion and then just put it on your agenda item for the next, I said ordinance, the Lake Committee. Meeting, committee meeting.
Someone like to make a motion to table?
I'll make the motion to table, Your Honor.
Okay, get a sec.
I'll second that.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment?
Martin Vota.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
That motion passes seven to zero.
I received a phone call on this next motion, I received a phone call from the individual about this, and it would probably behoove us not to go forward with this right now until I've had time to discuss this further with that person, so I'd like to just table it for tonight.
Okay, so motion to table?
Sir.
Second, Alderman Vota, roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Vota.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Without, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to accept this ordinance into the archives.
Okay, get a sec on that?
Second.
Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next motion, I'd like to go ahead and go back to our City Attorney, we had a discussion last week, was able to meet with him, I believe you have a bullet list in front of you that the attorney put together for us, and before we make any attempts at any action on this motion, I would like him to go ahead and take the floor and explain some of his concerns and some of our concerns, and maybe his recommendation as to how to move on this.
Well, thank you. I had an email with the mayor, we communicated about this subject matter, Alderman Vota and A.J. and myself met earlier this week, and we kind of brainstormed, if you will, about this topic that came up there, and interested in my input about, from a legal matter, what should be in this type of lease, and then one thing led to another. So, I took the liberty of putting this, our thoughts, down on paper, it was about three and a half pages of things that we ought to probably think about, rather than taking up, you know, an hour or so this evening discussing, it'd be my recommendation that you would actually table this, put this back on your next Lake Committee meeting, and perhaps consider each of these bullet points of thoughts. One thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is that probably in your packet I would say table this motion and then just put it on your agenda item for the next... I said ordinance, the Lake Committee meeting.
Someone like to make a motion to table?
I'll make the motion to table, Your Honor.
Okay. Get a second?
I'll second that.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment?
Discussion table.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Okay. Roll call, please.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bortle.
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
As there's any typos in there, don't hold it against me.
One question for the committee.
Go ahead.
Will this require the city creating an ordinance so that we can allow the leases to...
It will. I mean, by statute, again, you're non-home rural, we can create an ordinance that will allow you to do this kind of leasing structure that we're suggesting here.
Well, just for time-saving sake, given the term of the ordinance committee, if an ordinance needs to come out of any committee that doesn't really need to have discussion that the ordinance committee has just passed through, I put some of these committees to just make that motion to have it done, rather than going through the ordinance committee and waiting another two weeks.
Correct. And apparently you've got some time. I think A.J. was talking to us about a September 9 commencement date for the hunting season, so we've got a little... a few weeks to deal with here yet.
We will place that on the next medium agenda. Thank you. Was that, Your Honor? Go ahead.
Wait, one second.
We've already done this twice. Have we got an ordinance in place that needs to be reviewed?
Well, I don't think you've got... do you have... I don't think you've got one with the deer hunting, do you?
Yeah. We have...
If you've already got, we don't need it, then.
You're talking about ordinances or agreements?
The ordinance, not the agreement. This is... this would be a new agreement.
Okay, well, I think with Alderman Dorchinez getting at it, if I may, we have two lease agreements in place right now.
Correct.
On lake property.
Right.
Do we have an ordinance? Is that what you're asking, that covers these?
Yeah.
I think you did that by a resolution, didn't you, Alderman Dorchinez? I'm thinking.
We did it. We've got two places that they're able to hunt.
Well, it's a good point. We're not going to recreate, make work for ourselves. I think once the Lake Committee decides what kind of terms they want and the council agrees, I can put you at least...
Just override it.
We can decide that at that time.
Okay.
Make it easy. Okay.
Good, Your Honor. I'll go ahead with the evening's Lake Airport Committee meeting. We had prior to the city council meeting, one motion came out of that, and that was a motion by Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Dorchinez to recommend to the city council to have day and hassle spray weeds along the Iwanika Blacktop at a cost not to exceed $6,000, and the cost will be shared equally between the lake, water, and street departments. Motion carried three to nothing. I'll place that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Second, Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bortle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
With that, Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion to extend this ordinance into the archives.
Okay. Get a sec on that.
Second.
Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Moving on to ordinance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I acted as chairman on that committee meeting because Mr. Jones is out of town. There was one motion that came out of the ordinance committee meeting. It's a rather lengthy one, but I feel the need to read it since there's a few people not present. The motion by Alderman Voda and second by Alderman Bud to recommend to the city council to direct the city attorney to prepare, per review by the ordinance committee, a resolution or ordinance that, one, authorizes the city attorney pursuant to 65 I.L.C.S. five slash one dash two dash one to retain on behalf of the city credit collection partners, a private collection agency, subject to the approval by the city and the city attorney of a debt collection agreement concerning collection of the city's fines for penalties and agreement with the Christian County Circuit Clerk's Office as to division of payments of assessed court costs and city ordinance violations cases. And, two, that's subject to approval of said agreement and the approval of the city attorney of all delinquent fines and penalties due to the city concerning ordinance violation cases instituted prior to 2012 will be initially turned over to credit collection partners for the collection subject to withdrawal from the credit collection partners without any fees or costs assessed to the city of any one or more of said cases from time to time by the city attorney at his discretion. And, three, the collection of delinquent fines and penalties concerning any one or more ordinance violations case instituted in 2012 and thereafter may be turned over to the credit collection partners and thereafter withdrawn from the credit collection partners without any fees or costs assessed to the city, all at the discretion of the city attorney from time to time. And that motion carried three to zero, and I'd like to make that in the form of a motion with a comment.
Okay. Get a sec on that. Alderman Coons? Go ahead with your comment. Alderman Bortle?
That was the longest motion I think I've ever heard since I've been on the city council, but...
I think Cindy did a wonderful job.
I think so. The only question I would have is, being the city attorney, the entire conversation that evening stemmed kind of on the second half of that motion, was the ordinance violations that would happen from 2012 forward. So there's a lot of questions on how we're going to handle that and when they would be sent forward, and in my opinion, I thought you were kind of under the assumption you would send them as you see fit, depending on the court, how the court system works.
Yeah, if I can...
Please.